Today is Wednesday, June 1st, 2016. Call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Mr. Aho, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Felber.
Here.
Mr. Solora.
Here.
Mr. Curtis.
Here.
Mrs. Davis.
Here.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron.
Here.
All right, we're all here. I'd like to ask you to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, we are at D. Agenda, is there any changes to the agenda or addendum items?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education enter into an executive session at 7:01 to discuss employment and compensation of public employees as per Board of Education Policy 01668.
Would you accept a amendment to that, in that we do that executive session after the administrative reports, actually prior to H?
That is, um, fine, yes.
So we would have an executive session at H, and the purpose of that is? Again, just to restate.
That the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss employment and compensation of public employees as per Board of Education Policy 01668.
Okay. Is there a motion? And she's made the motions, they're second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis, any discussion? I'll just make a note that we would be adding that as G1 prior to the Treasurer's Report and H. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron.
Yes.
Mr. Curtis.
Yes.
Mr. Solora.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Felber.
Yes. And that item passes 5-0, assuming no other changes to the agenda. All right. One of my briefest President's Reports ever, first of all, congratulations to the class of 2016. For those that witnessed the graduation, I don't think I tripped a single student, since I know many, I was chided at the last board meeting. I also go out hearty congratulations to the staff, administration, and all employees for landing the ship and getting 2016 landed safely. Another great year. We got to see a lot of great accomplishments at graduation, but as we get the privilege of seeing the accomplishments all year. Summer's here, students enjoy sleeping late, but your board isn't. We still continue to work, we're still very concerned about our fiduciary responsibility, as well as all the other responsibilities that fall to board members. So with that, I'm going to close this report for Wednesday, June 1st, and turn it over to the Superintendent for Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, Mr. Felber, Board of Education. While it is a not-so-packed house this evening, I think most of our fans are out enjoying this beautiful weather and the start of summer vacation. Board of Education, as you know, the school district doesn't sleep during the summer months. We are in full swing with cleaning and painting and gardening and planning lessons and curriculum development. We had teachers in this morning for training, technology for training, so it just never stops, and it's a great time to refresh and retool for next school year. As Mr. Felber just indicated, congratulations to the class of 2016. We are delighted at all 328 graduates who commenced on May 24th at E.J. Thomas Hall. Special thanks to our high school principal, Mrs. Turingo, as well as Donna Houston, our graduation advisor, for just doing a tremendous job with all the planning and facilitating this year's graduation program. It was a very wonderful event. By the way, Board, our graduates earned nearly $6 million in scholarship dollars this year, and we just think that's a mark of the wonderful students that commenced on the 24th. Just a reminder that we're currently putting the final touches on the Senior Send-Off, which is our newsletter that will be going to each home of each graduate, and then it'll be an insert in the Twinsburg Bulletin within the next week or so. Wanting to make sure we've edited it properly, that every student that should be recognized is in there, and it's looking very, very nice. So the Senior Send-Off newsletter will be coming home to all of our homes, and especially the homes of our graduates here within the next couple of weeks. Best wishes to our Twinsburg High School Track and Field Team. They are headed to Columbus this coming Thursday, actually tomorrow, and they'll be competing in the OHSAA State Track Championship Meet. We have one student, senior, actually graduate, Bridget Keenan, who is going to be competing in Discus, and we have, I think, eight other student athletes who are participating in a variety of other meets on this coming weekend. So we thank our wonderful coaching staff, Coach Spencer Johnson and Coach Tom Thome, the assistant coaches, the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters for supporting our kids always, and of course, all of our wonderful parents and fans who've been with this group of wonderful athletes all season and quite honestly, for the past six years, because some of these students started in track as seventh graders over at the middle school. So good luck to our Tigers. Also, Board of Education, the summertime is a great opportunity to pick up a wonderful book, and all of our students beginning in first grade have summer reading to take care of. And so I just remind our parents that if you go to our district website, and there are two ways, actually, actually three ways to get the summer reading list if you don't have it at home right now. The first is to click on District Departments, then click on Curriculum, and in the right-hand margin, you can find the summer reading list there. You can type in "summer reading list" in the search bar, and you can find it there, or it's also found in all of the homepages for all five of our schools. So students, don't wait until August 16th to pick up that book. You have a lot of time ahead of you, and it's just really, really great reading for you to take care of early, and then, once you finish those books, go grab another book, because summer is a great time to just relax and do some wonderful reading. Board of Education, as you know, during the summer, we have a very special edition of Twinsburg Schools today. It will be the July Show, and it will be the swan song of Logan Polowski, who has been our host for the past five years. And this summer show actually is a compilation of wonderful things that have happened all school year. So it will be the July Show on Cable 9. And also, speaking of Cable 9, this afternoon, I posted on the website all of the dates for the show on which the commencement program happens. So if you're interested to know when you can view commencement 2016, look on our website. I also tweeted that information out earlier this afternoon. Board of Education, I received an SOS call this afternoon from our friends at the Emergency Assistance Center for the Fill a Bag, Feed a Family Program. As you know, this coming Sunday, June 5th, there will be an army of volunteers that will deliver grocery bags to every home in our school community as part of the donation, the food collection for the Emergency Assistance Center. I'm understanding that they're short on volunteers, and so they're looking for some help. If you are interested, please visit our district website, right on the homepage, there's some information as to how you can sign up to volunteer on Sunday, June 5th. And then, on the other end of things, next Saturday, June 11th, is the day to pick up all of the filled grocery bags. So thank you to our residents who will be very, very kind in making those non-perishable food item donations. And then on Saturday morning, June 11th, if you could put those grocery bags by your front door, no later than 10:00 AM, we're looking for some volunteers that are interested in picking up those grocery bags and bringing them to a designated location. Again, that information is on our website. If you could please spare an hour or two, we sure would appreciate it. Last year's program was a tremendous success, and it was a success because of all the volunteers that were able to spend an hour or two in making that happen. And then finally, Board, just a community announcement, you know, on Saturday, June 18th, it's the Third Annual Taste of Twinsburg at Twinsburg Township Square. Always a great event to bring out your family and have a lot of great family fun, and of course, the food is always awesome. So the Taste of Twinsburg Committee has been hard at work now for more than a year, planning the Third Annual Taste of Twinsburg Event begins at 2:00 PM on Saturday, June 18th, and we hope that we see everybody there. Mr. Felber, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. We are at community reports, and I look way out in the distance, and I see Mr. Steve Shibek from CBCC, so I'm going to call you first, because you probably got places to be.
Well, congratulations on completing another school year, and a successful one. I can't believe it's June already. As we all typically refer to, May is May Madness in academics, because of all the recollections, CBC was no, not to be left out, and we, the bulk of our meeting was recognizing those that competed in various events. But also, there's a summary of the senior awards. There were 321 awards given out to the seniors, the graduating class from the County Valley Career Center, and with the Board's indulgence, I'd just like to go by program and acknowledge the students from our district that received recognition and/or awards. So in architectural and mechanical design, we had Joshua Gogan, who was the outstanding student, two-year perfect attendance, and also was early placement in his field. And then we had Melissa Linderman, as recognized as well as being a senior. Autobody repair and finishing, we had Michael Holleran, who was recognized for her's early placement. Auto service technology, we had Nicholas Jamison. And we also had Justin Pacey. Building and property maintenance, Logan Maluski, was recognized as the outstanding student, and also recognized for early placement. Construction trades, we had Adam Durden, Avion Rodriguez, and Leek Ware, who were recognized for their senior accomplishment. Cosmetology, we had Amari Hall and Serena Bruce. Medicine, Kim Von Gask, Taylor Smith Rogers. And in culinary arts and food services, we have Sabrina Hutton-Catina, Morgan Jackson, Alexis Thompson, Dabell Weeden Jr. In our dental assisting program, we had Heaven Graham, Ariane Johnson. And in digital design, we had Carly Davenport, who was placed in several events, the GAC, BPA, and Skills USA events, so those are three different competitions that she had placed in. Engineering technology, oh, sorry, we didn't have any in engineering technology. Graphic imaging technology, Jay Evert, Devon Grosh, who was also placed in the GAC. Taylor Kerrigan, Kelly Rogers. And Jacob Roth was two-year perfect attendance, early placement, NTHS, GAC, and also received a scholarship in his field. Heating and air conditioning, we had James Hudson II. Health careers, we had Amari Jaggers, Rebecca Sidoo, who was the outstanding student, two-year perfect attendance, and NTHS, and also received a scholarship. Sean Turrah Taylor. And in health careers, we had Desiree Cudden, Rochelle Perry, Amanda Pendergast, who was on HOSA, and Desiree was also on early placement in HOSA Award. Hotels and resorts, we had Kari Evans. Machine technology, we had Corey Nagy. Marketing technology, we had Andrew Fowler-Huber, Dominic Savagio. In our media technology, we had Joshua Deputy, Amari Foot, Brandon Harcheck, Emmanuel Leota, and of course, Logan Polowski, who was the outstanding student, and also Student of the Month. Our medical administrative assistance specialists, we had Stephanie Hardy, who was placed in the BPA. Programming and software development, we had Matthew Faulkner, we had Joel Hines, both with placed in the BPA. Alorm Moore, who was in the BPA. Jordan Leek, outstanding student, early placement, BPA. Bradley Tyler, also placed in the BPA. Jan Bennet was in our public health and safety. Sales and service was Brian Luso, who also placed in Deca Diamonds. And our sales and service fundamentals, Stormy Marley. Teaching professions, Shannon Tac, who placed in FCC LA. Transition to work was Austin Rivera. And I apologize if I botched anybody's names. I can only imagine what our administrators had to do during graduation. So apologize on any pronunciation errors. So several of our students were there that evening, last week, for our board meeting. We presented them with certificates for their accomplishments. Some couldn't be there, actually Garble Heights commencement, so did Nargonia, so we missed two of our districts participating. So that was kind of the bulk of our reading. We talked about a lot of our summer projects that are coming up. It seems that summer's maintenance time, so we've got a bunch of projects coming up. We did employ two very important positions with the Career Center. We hired a new executive director and a new Director of Adult Education, very qualified individuals, got to meet them, and I think we're in good hands moving forward with those two positions, because those were very key, as Mr. Curtis touched on before, two retirements in our organizational administration. Lastly, we also presented our five-year forecast, which is favorable through 2020. We are counting on our renewal, and it will be on the ballot in November. And however, with that still being favorable on the positive tax flow side, our revenues are declining as we move forward, just because of the inflationary and the uncertainty in tax values, which we're all battling. It is a little more a challenge at the Career Center, because we are dealing with two different counties, two different reappraisal cycles, two different delinquency programs. So we're hoping that, just as Mr. Aho does, we forecast for the worst and hope for the best, and I think we're going to be, come out, come out fine, but we're really relying on our renewal this fall. And that's all I have. Mr. Curtis, did I leave anything out? Do you want to add anything?
The other position that we hired also was the Director of Business Services. So three, actually, three major administrative positions that we've been able to fill. So huge endeavor, but good, strong administrative team moving forward. The only other piece with respect to finances was that we were given an update relative to the phase-out of the TPP, that four career centers was omitted in the last budget, and apparently, from what we're hearing in Columbus, that was never intentional, so they're looking to put that money back for JVCCs throughout Ohio. Obviously, we can't forecast that, so we're not including that, but it's looking like they're going to put that back in before they go for official summer recess.
Thank you so much. Have a great summer.
Thank you, Steve.
Hi, Steve.
Are there any other committees that wish to report?
Okay, so for buildings and grounds, we had a meeting yesterday at 8:00 AM at the Board Office. We had discussion about several projects. Matt and I are both going to talk about a couple. I will start with the roofing project. This will be at RB Chamberlain Middle School. On Tuesday, May 24th, bids were received for the middle school roof project. Three bids were received, and GNW Roofing and Construction of Pennsylvania submitted the apparent low bid of $224,000. This bid was below the architect's construction cost estimate of $300,000. All comments were favorable from all references, and we recommend you move forward with this bidder. And that was the roofing. The roofing at the middle school is going to be in two different areas. The total roof area is 101,542 square feet. The problem area is 7,052 feet, which 7,052 square feet will be repaired. And that project is moving forward for the summer, and should be done prior to school being in session. So that is the roofing project for RBC. We also have some parking that we're going to be taking care of over at RBC, in the back of the teacher parking lot. On Tuesday, May 24th, bids were received for two different areas, for both tennis courts and paving. Matt will be talking about the tennis courts. Five bids were received, and Burton and Scott Contractors of Newbury, Ohio submitted the apparent low bid. This bid was also below the architect's construction cost estimate. The teacher parking construction is in right around $65,500, and that parking lot will actually be increasing some parking spot areas back over, it's closer to Tiger Stadium, for those of you that are familiar with the entrance to the stadium. The parking lot back over there where the van comes out is, that's the parking lot we're referring to. And that completion date is set for August 1st. And the final thing I'll speak about is, we have some drainage issues over underneath, in the Tiger Stadium area, underneath our, kind of over where the bleachers are, and that project will be taking place as well, and that is a cost of $7,500, and that will also take place this summer to help deal with some water that's pooling underneath there and causing a little bit of erosion. So those are the three areas that I'm talking about. That completes my report.
Is there anything else?
So the tennis courts, we've talked about this in the past, are going to be fixing some drainage and some, some great issues, so those are the tennis courts by the swimming pool. We're going to be actually removing one entire court right now, and redoing that, and then top coating the other two and fixing some drainage issues there. So that actually is tied in with the paving that Mrs. Terrell Waldron spoke about, as well as the drainage, so that's on the agenda tonight for a vote. We also are looking at some renovation projects, which you'll see on the agenda tonight, that we recommend for Dodge, Bissel, and Wilcox, addressing some unit vent issues at Dodge and Wilcox and Bissel. Again, kind of trying to make the buildings a little more comfortable and a little bit more efficient. We've identified some things with some automation that we've done in the past at Wilcox and Bissel to help these come through. Also, hot water heater replacements, I know Chad's talked about this quite a bit in the past, so you'll see that recommended for approval tonight for two different buildings, Chamberlain as well as the high school. And also, the last item that we talked about was the purchase of a box truck, box van, actually, for our maintenance staff to use to transport equipment back and forth from buildings, also to different events. Utilize that instead of a van, or instead of a bus, to kind of help keep our fleet miles down. And that's actually, Chad actually has a very, very interesting plan for that to kind of help pay for it over the course of five years through the sale of our buses that we're retiring out of our fleet, so. Like I said, all of these went through. Building and grounds, we recommend that Board approves them this evening. Very happy with the work that was done on these, especially with financing. You'll see that these are all permanent improvement expenditures, and all fall along with the PI plan that was put in place with the previous Board for the five-year PI plan previously. So these are all, all fall under the spending dollars that that was approved previously, so.
Anything else? Chad, your name's mentioned a couple of times. Is there anything you wanted to add or elaborate?
I'd like to add that.
All right. Any other committees? Okay. We are at administrative report, so I want to ask Mr. Aho for a five-year forecast report.
Thank you. Let's get it up on the screen.
I am paying attention, but I'm going to kick back.
This is the May update of the five-year forecast. It's typical, we do the forecast in October, and that incorporates the new year, and that's the main forecast, and then again in May, we just basically update it. The five-year forecast has been submitted, yet to submit it by the end of May, so it's already on the ODE webpage. You can get to the webpage through a link off of our Twinsburg webpage, or you can go directly to ODE, which is education.ohio.gov. There's some links there, you click to the five-year forecast, and then it takes you to the second page, or you can either go by district or by county, you can look at any school districts, five-year forecast, they're all there, and ours is there also. So you can compare, look at other schools, you know, see how we're doing compared to other schools. The idea of the five-year forecast is to provide Board of Education, Administration, Public, general indication of the probable future financial position of the school district based on information currently available today to the school district. Really, it's kind of a snapshot of the future. What we know today, kind of project it out, take trends and project those out. Things change, so the forecast will change over time. So basically, it's just to kind of give, you know, like the barometer does, it gives you an indication of where we're headed. You know, is it going to be stormy out, is it going to be, you know, clear and mild? It just kind of shows you how, you know, the direction. One of the things that we really watch, you know, overall, the forecast gives you a big picture, but the thing that we watch to a more intense degree is the, our per people expenditures. We've been able to hold those expenditures down, and that's part of our fiscal responsibility. We're actually lower than state average, lower than similar districts, and lower than many of our neighboring districts. This is something that we're pretty proud of, that we can do that and maintain the quality of education here in Twinsburg. The other things, too, is to note, is over, you know, since 2007, we basically have been operating on the same amount of revenue. You can see, like, there's a little bump up in the middle there, and that's when Chrysler closed, and then they, you know, there was a settlement there on their tangible dollars as they were leaving. But basically, it's been pretty flat, you know, since 2007, you know, $42 million in 2007, and, you know, $42 million in 2015. This is what the five-year forecast looks like when you go to the ODE website. It's got two years of, or three years of history, and then five years forecasting out. You know, there's the top rows that shows the real estate and school foundation dollars, and there's a line in there for the cat tax reimbursement and homestead and rollback dollars, and a miscellaneous line on the revenue side. Expenditure side has salaries, benefits line, purchase services, that's where we, you know, have someone else do service for us, like an attorney or the school nursing folks like that. And there's a supply line, of course, that's where you buy stuff, you buy the paper, and that's for the classroom, and those kind of materials come out of those lines, janitorial supplies, things like that. Then we have some debt in there also. So there's the revenues, your kind of ORB line, and the expenditures are ORB lines. And then the two yellow lines down at the bottom to note, you know, those are the lines where the, you know, the graph where they start crossing each other. This year, they'll probably be, you know, pretty close to, they'll probably cross each other, and their expenditures will be higher than our revenues. We do have our fund balance to carry us through several years. This is a concern right now that we need to take a look at moving forward. This is what the five-year forecast does, it highlights those issues, and then it facilitates the discussion. The five-year forecast is built, the things you look at are the encumbrances, the whole budgetary process. You've seen over different meetings where we do the tax budget, and a couple other things that have to go down to the county. And that's all because the public entities, cities, townships, libraries, school districts, we all have to do purchase orders. Before anybody can buy something, they need to put a purchase order through the Treasurer's office, or Clerk's office, whatever, the case may be. And then that, you know, the Treasurer then would say, okay, you've got money in your account, you know, you can buy things, you know. And that's to really prevent the overspending as best it can be done. You know, the things that are the big, the big-ticket items on, you know, of course, the five-year forecast are the personal services. We are a service industry, you know, we have lots of teachers and lots of staff to, you know, keep things moving, bus drivers, cooks and all that stuff, janitors, lots of folks to keep this operation moving forward. Retirements and benefits are the healthcare, the retirement piece. We've been pretty fortunate, we're in a large consortium, and that's been pretty good for us. They've been giving us premium holidays over the years. They've done better than I anticipated, so it's been, it's been a nice thing. And then, of course, the other lines are, like I said, personal services, purchase services, which is, there's tuitions and tuition in that, utilities, nursing, supplies and materials, and then debt service. One of the things we've been dealing with for quite a while, and I'm sure everybody's heard about this several times, is that it's the loss of the tangible personal property tax. That was a tax that basically companies paid. We have that locally, we have that large industrial park down there, and they pay that on their machinery and fixtures and furniture and that, those type of items. Back several years ago, they, you know, the legislature eliminated it, it was House Bill 66 eliminated the tangible personal property tax, and then they brought in what they called a commercial activity tax, to kind of backfill that as it was phasing out. Well, they've been slowly chipping away at the commercial activity tax and getting rid of that, too. So a tax that once collected $9.8 million. So a tax that once collected nine point eight million dollars is recently been collecting six point two million for us on the cat side, so there's been a loss of three point six million dollars. And this kind of shows, you know, the the phase out, you know, it was back in 2005, '45, where the we had the nine point eight million dollars, and then, you know, the last couple of years, it's been down to six point two million dollars. And also, too, it shows in there whether we're at the forty-two million dollars. Over time, it's it's been the same, kind of like flat revenues. So the chart shows the reduction of the six, the three point six million dollars. You know, that's a lot of staff, a lot of teachers. You know, a tax that was once under local control and was collected through the county was this has been eliminated now that the state has a commercial activity tax that they control, and they've been taking those dollars and and using them to, you know, backfill their coffers. Since September 2010, just how the states and the legislators have been making it difficult for schools is there's been four different school funding models, and then there's been five different tangible cat tax phase-out calculations. They've frozen it a couple of times, they've accelerated it, they've changed it, they've put in different numbers, one percent, five eighths of a mil, and all kinds of different mechanics they come up with. So that makes it difficult to forecast. You don't know, you know, what the next change is going to be. Now, another thing that makes it kind of difficult for schools is House Bill 920, which was passed many years ago, and that caps the amount of tax revenue that districts receive. So when a levy's passed, you don't get any more dollars, you know, on on the inflationary growth. Back in eight, 1985, the district had three levies. We were collecting thirty-nine mils, operating mills. Well, over time, is inflation and other things have kicked in. We've had to pass, and we have seven levies now, and we're only collecting thirty-six effective mils. So that's, you know, what inflation and the cap and the cap have done over time is is, you know, we need levies, unfortunately, just to stay, to keep even. You know, one of the things that you heard a couple of years ago was when they were opening the casinos, like, oh, casino revenue, you know, what's, you know, it's going to be a help, you know. Well, right there, you can see the casino revenue that this school district has received over the last couple of years. Two hundred thousand dollars, which is great, you know, it's helpful, but it's not a, you know, it's not going to fund the school district. It helps, but it's it's far from a solution. One of the other things, this is a state funding report, and they show the calculation on, you know, if the funding model worked properly, they have this calculation that they show. You can get this off of the ODE website also. You can get any school district's state funding model. This was the one from the second payment in May. They do the calculation, Twinsburg School District should receive nine point two million dollars. But because of all the different, you know, like I said earlier, that there's been four different funding models, with all these different funding models, they put caps and limits and all these other things. So over time, if they let the formula work, we'd have nine point eight, nine point two million dollars coming from the state. Well, these caps and that have limited us, limited us, and we only get four point nine million dollars from the state. So unfortunately, there's a difference of four point three billion dollars that because of all these different funding models that you don't get because each time they put a funding model in, a different funding model, they said, well, we can't, like, let you have more than X percentage increase. So they've limited the increases over time, and and that's what has gone up, happening to Twinsburg, as we've been kept. Another thing that's affecting us and affects the the funding model, the the five-year forecast, is the redirecting of state funding to charter schools, electronic type of schools. There's also some other deductions, Peterson Autism Direct Payments for all of my students. Over the last several years, it's jumped from, you know, from nine, from 2009, it's it's jumped from four hundred thousand dollars to one point two million dollars over time. These are things that just happen. We can't control it, and it's really difficult to predict that, you don't know. You know, these have been results of new legislation that have come about, and, you know, predicting that's very difficult. And one of the things we always work at is is this this model here, these lines, you know, expenditures and revenues, and then, of course, the fund balance. The fund balance, you know, crosses the line, the zero line, out the future on the five-year forecasts. Well, the the administration, the school district, and the board, and and all of us, we work hard at trying to push that line out further and further. You know, if we did nothing, you know, of course, you know, we hit that line and you'd, you know, you'd be in trouble. That's kind of what the five-year forecast does, it facilitates those discussions. You see the line, you see where it crosses, and you work, you know, to find solutions. You can do this for any school district, you can go out and do their, you know, look at their five-year forecast and plot them into a graph like this, and it's going to look pretty much the same. You know, if it doesn't cross the line this year, it'll probably be next year or the following year. We're all in the same cycle and it's very similar, school district to school district. Here's Nordonia Schools, which is our neighbor. You can see out in in 2020, they have, their expenditures are higher than their revenues, but they have some fund balance left. Well, probably the following year, 2021, they'll probably be, you know, crossing that, the the fund balance will cross the line. That's what it's doing for us in 2020. So, you know, the same thing there, you know, all the schools are kind of, you know, similar outcomes. There's some of the concerns that we have to deal with, you know, building the forecast also, are the unfunded mandates, things that come out of Columbus and and the federal government, third grade reading guarantee, student learning objectives, next generation assessments, you know, wanting to provide more academic opportunities, aid courses, and those kind of things are great. We have evaluations, teacher evaluations that require a lot of time and effort, special ed, you know, those those costs, scholarships, tuitions, community school deductions, you know, and then when that kind of stuff happens, then you have to look at, you know, what's, you know, what do we do? You know, and sometimes the non-core opportunities then begin to shrink. You know, the forecast, you know, as you're moving along, you have to recalculate. It's just like, you know, the these the navigation devices, as you're going along and if something comes in up in an obstacle or something like that, you know, the thing says recalculating. So that's a lot of what we have to do as what the forecast is, you know, from from fall to spring, you know, from year to year, we're always recalculating. And that's not unusual when you have a forecast. You know, if you look in the Wall Street Journal or, you know, any kind of publication, business publication, you'd say today, you know, there's always stories in there, you know, large companies, Wall Street companies where their earnings are less than expected, their profits are are being revised, you know. So these firms, large firms, you know, ideally staff, you know, they're doing the same thing that schools have to do. They have to go in and have to revise their forecasts because they're always changing. There's always differences and things that need to be considered. That's kind of the the idea of the five-year forecast. We put it together, you know, for a for a, it takes basically what we know today, and we look to the future and then see, you know, where the school district's headed, and then we build the conversations and the the discussion around, you know, what what needs to be done.
Thank you, Marty. With the risk of sounding like a broken record, and for those that have young children that are watching the video of this meeting, you can explain what a broken record is or a scratched CD, or you might want to use the terminology of a viral video. But this board, the board before, has continually been watching this. Marty's been doing a great job holding the line and helping the board hold the line along with the administration. But these are difficult times, and we do have levy cycles coming up. And for those that have read the article in the Volt recently, when the five-year forecast was approved at the last meeting. So we, you know, we've seen this, the barometer in fair weather, and unfortunately, that barometer is starting to look stormy. The Finance Committee continues to watch this, is having additional meetings, as well as we mentioned previously, the entire board is going to be having a work session specifically on this topic and continuing to watch this because it it's difficult to to say the least. There's a lot of moving parts in this district. We're heavy on personnel like every other district, so, you know, you definitely are going to be hearing more of this, is why I omitted it for the first time in my presidency report because I knew we were going to continue to talk about it. So I'm going to stop the record momentarily and see if any of my colleagues or administration have any other questions regarding the five-year forecast.
Yeah, I got some, just a couple of comments. And just to piggyback on what my colleague, Mr. Felber, has talked about, this goes back a few board, a few boards in terms of implementing some things to help defray the impact of a lot of the revenue that's been reduced at the state level. But one of the things that you really can't forecast, but you have to plan for when when they happen are changes in legislation that require us to enact things that that cost money. So I like to refer to them affectionately as non-funded mandates. But when you have added testing or testing that is, that requires you to do it primarily in an online format, it requires us to invest money to make sure that our infrastructure is appropriate for all of our students to do what's necessary to take the test. That costs money, and Columbus isn't fronting the money for us to do that. College Credit Plus, another wonderful idea, well-intended, however, there's a financial impact that the district has to incur, and we have to foot the bill for things like that. And so I just want to make sure that the public understands that we're doing things that are necessary to pay for what we're required to do, but in addition, we're also being mindful of of the money, the dwindling dollars from Columbus, and looking, being forward-thinking in the decisions that we're making, not next year, not two years from now, but, you know, up to five years from now, so that we're able to sustain the quality of education that our students receive here, so that we're able to sustain continuing to retain and hire high-quality staff, all of which cost a lot of money. So when we talk about, you know, just the need to make decisions to kind of help defray the cost, we need to make sure that we understand the context in which we as a district are having to survive in today's educational environment. Mr. Felber said, we're, the the weather's stormy right now, and who knows, whoever's sitting next in the governor's office, that could change, as well as whatever seats are in the legislature, we're at their mercy, but we don't make those decisions. We're forced to do with what we have. And so I want to make sure that, you know, as a public, we understand that and we'll continue to function in such a way that we're fiscally responsible, but also making sure that we're delivering high-quality education to our students.
Any further comments? All right, thank you, Marty. We are now at remonstrance. I don't believe if you have any blue cards. I don't see anybody asking to respond, remonstrance. So we are now at the addendum edition of G1, Executive Session, that was motion by Ms. Kathy Earl Waldron. This motion will read that the Board of Education enters into executive session at, what is that, seven?
Forty-three.
Seven forty-two, to discuss employment and compensation of public employees as per the public, I'm excusing, as per the Board of Education Policy 0166 Alpha. Is there a motion as read?
Send it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Earl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
No. And that item passes 4-1. The board will now be in executive session, and we do anticipate returning for the rest of the meeting to continue the agenda at H. So, board is now in executive session. I'm going to make a motion that the board reconvene from executive session at 7:55. Is there any, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second? We don't, we don't just reconvene?
Second.
Okay, we reconvene then. Thought we had a vote to be back in. Roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mr. Solera?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Earl Waldron?
Here.
And we are all here and all back. We are now at H, Treasurers' Report and Recommendations, without objection from my colleagues, I'm going to read H1 through 4 together. H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of May 18, 2016, as sent to the board under separate cover. H2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial report for the month of April 2016, Banklands Reconciliation General Fund Financial Summary Report and Financial Report by Fund, as sent to the board under separate cover. H3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of April 2016. The total, including payroll, is $4,162,660.93. And finally, H4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education, Summit County, Ohio, as a statutory taxing authority for the Twinsburg Public Library, approves the Twinsburg Public Library Alternative Tax Budget Information and forward the tax budget to the Summit County Budget Commission, as sent to the board under separate cover. Is there a motion for those four items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Solera. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Any discussion? Always maybe on H4, Marty, if you want to explain our relationship with our library, as we always do.
Yeah, the library is basically started as a school library kind of thing, so we're the fiduciary, you have a responsible, I can't over-salt responsibility. We don't really do anything but just kind of a technicality or a formality, we approve their budget, and so we do that every year.
All right. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Earl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those four items pass 5-0. We are now at I, Action Items Personnel. I1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I1, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I2, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I3, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves revised certified, certificated recall list per the attached exhibit I4. Is there a motion for those four items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. Any discussion?
Mr. Felber, if I may introduce our new candidate for the assistant principal position.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I told Mr. Kowalski I didn't need a microphone, and now I did, so I'm coming over here instead. I'd like to introduce Tim Sullen. Tim, want to come forward, please? Mr. Sullen is my recommendation this evening, Board of Education, for the assistant principal position that has been made available because Mr. Roy Warren chose to retire to sunny Florida. And so I'm delighted to introduce to you to Mr. Sullen. Mr. Sullen holds a Bachelor of Science degree from my alma mater, Cleveland State University, where he graduated in May of 2009. His concentration was mild to moderate special education, where he holds a mild to moderate license to teach special education. Then he went to Ursuline College and earned a Master's of Educational Administration in May of 2012. Mr. Sullen holds a principal license as well as being OTES certified. We appreciate that. That's always a lot of work. And a little bit about his work history, initially, Mr. Sullen wasn't quite sure if education was for him, but he caught the bug and was initially employed as an educational aide for the Cleveland Metropolitan School District in August of 2007. Once earning his teaching license, he became employed as a mild to moderate intervention specialist for the Euclid City School District in 2009. And then, once earning his administrative license, he was employed at St. Martin De Porres High School in Cleveland in 2013 as the dean of students. In 2014, he joined the Cleveland Metropolitan School District, guess you went back home there for a minute, and he has been assistant principal at both Lincoln West High School and currently is the assistant principal in charge of curriculum specialist, specialist at Rhodes High School. Board of Education, the process for hiring or recommending Mr. Sullen was a long and winding road. We were very particular about the candidate I wanted to recommend to you this evening. Mrs. Turingo and Mrs. McKinney did an excellent job of vetting out many candidates. letting out many candidates. Actually, we had a first round that the superintendent wasn't satisfied, so I sent them back to the pool again. Because to be employed by your Board of Education, or you, the Board of Education, you have to be a top-notch administrator. And I do believe that Mr. Sullen fits the need here. We expect some wonderful things from him as he begins his tenure here at the high school. And, Tim, I'm sure you want to say a few things to the Board of Education about you, maybe something personally, because we didn't talk too much about that in the interview process, but I know they would like to know you as a person, too. Please.
My name is Ms. Powers. Timothy Sullen, married with children, happily married. So that's always good, as long as I can keep my wife happy. What they learned about me, I would say, through the interview processes, I'm very quick-witted. I always have something fun to say. One of the great things about me is I always have a positive attitude, and that's key in this role. So I'm not crazy. If you hear people complaining that I always say "Happy Friday," it's because I need everyone else to have that Friday attitude, because people are just happier on Fridays. So when it's a worst day, when I tell you "Happy Friday," it's because I need you to match my attitude and my passion for the job and what I'm showing up to do every day. I have two wonderful daughters. Actually, I just came from Dodge Intermediate School, where my five-year-old graduated from preschool, cap and gown, everything. So I try not to cry. I didn't cry, and ran over here as soon as that was over. So first of all, I just want to thank Ms. Powers, Ms. Toringo, the administrative team, for even considering me. That's an honor in itself. So I truly, 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 from the deepest part of me, I thank them for that. And I look forward to coming and working with this wonderful, wonderful premier district of Twinsburg. Unfortunately, we live in Sullen. My wife is actually a teacher and is actually an administrator in Sullen, so we're now a house divided. I've been telling her. But I'm excited because I'm on the right side of the thing, so.
Thank you, Mr. Sullen. Crying's allowed. It's usually during Marty's reports, though. I thought I'd get Marty on one. Thank you. Any further discussion on those four items as read? Let's make it official. Roll call, please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Torel Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those four items pass five-oh. And so now we can officially say congratulations, Mr. Sullen. Welcome to Twinsburg. We'll work on that house divided. We are now at J, and had a request from a board member to read items J one through five separate. So we're going to read, without objection, those first five action items, new business. J one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a donation from the Summit Education Initiative of Akron, Ohio, valued at one thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars and twenty-two cents. The books and miscellaneous supplies will be used at Wilcox Primary in the Key Steps to Reading Success Program, per the attached exhibit J one. J two, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a donation from Heinen's Teaming Up for Education Donation Program out of Warrensville, Ohio, in the amount of three hundred ninety-three dollars and zero cents, to support events and purchase miscellaneous supplies for the students of Samuel Bissell Elementary School, per the attached exhibit J two. J three, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts donations from Target of Minneapolis, Minnesota, in the amounts of one hundred thirty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents and two hundred dollars for classroom and miscellaneous school supplies at Samuel Bissell Elementary School, per the attached exhibit J three. J four, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the donations from Target, again in Minneapolis, Minnesota, in the amount of three hundred dollars for student activities at Twinsburg High School, per the attached exhibit J four. And J five, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the low list of items to be deleted from inventory, and that list is in the agenda. Do I have a motion for those five items as read?
So.
Moved by Ms. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. Any questions other than thank yous for the donations, as always, from Target and Heinen's? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Torel Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those five items, five items pass five-oh. I'm going to now read item J six by itself. J six, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the insurance rate for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year, per the Ohio Schools Council, in the amount of one hundred forty-one thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars and zero cents, per the attached exhibit J six. Is there a motion for J six as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. Any questions, discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Steve.
Mrs. Torel Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And that item passes four-zero with one abstention. I am now going to continue reading J seven, eight, and nine, together without objection from my colleagues. J seven, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement with Windstream Communications. This agreement is a three-year contract for the district's phone lines and long-distance services, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. J eight, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement with Norstan Communications, DBA Black Box Network Solutions from Adena, Minnesota. The agreement is for a three-year software and hardware phone maintenance contract, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement sent to the board under separate cover, at the cost of fifty-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars and zero cents. This is a general fund expense. J nine, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the THS Track and Field Team to attend the OHSAA State and Track and Field Championship Meet at the Ohio State University for Thursday, June second, two thousand sixteen, through Saturday, June fourth, two thousand sixteen. The trip will be paid for with general funds, in addition to the support of the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, as sent to the board under separate cover. Is there a motion for those three items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Waldron. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. My discussion is good luck to the team and states. Very exciting. We've had a lot of different teams through this past academic year, going through to various levels, and this is very exciting. And I believe that's coached by Mr. Glover, if I'm not mistaken.
He's assistant coach.
Assistant coach, who's the?
Spencer Johnson and Tom Thome.
Thank you. I knew I didn't have all the names. And also thanks to the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters for helping support that trip, and the students for doing the hard work in getting there. Any further discussion on those three items?
Just on J seven, just a comment that that is actually a renegotiated contract that is a savings above and beyond what we've had in the past. So that's just another example of, you know, we talked about Marty's five-year forecast and the due diligence that the board tries to impart in terms of our oversight. But, you know, kudos to the administrative team again for watching every dollar and negotiating that.
Can only guess who's making those negotiations, but thank you very much. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Torel Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those three items pass five-oh. Continuing reading ten through sixteen. We're still at J, right?
Yeah.
Getting lost. J ten, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the bid proposal from Burton Scott Contractors of Newbury, Ohio, for the paving and drainage replacement projects at the Twinsburg City School District Tennis Courts, RB Chamberlain Middle School, and Twinsburg Tiger Stadium, in the amount of two hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars and five, and five hundred dollars. Construction to commence on June second upon completion of assigned contract. Project will be paid for using permanent improvement funds. Eleven, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a proposal from GNW Roofing and Construction of Pennsylvania for the roofing replacement project at RB Chamberlain Middle School, in the amount of two hundred twenty-four thousand dollars. Construction to commence on June second upon completion of assigned contract. The project will be paid for using permanent improvement funds. Twelve, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the HVAC renovation projects at George G Dodge Intermediate School, Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and Wilcox Primary School, with CCG Automation of Richfield, Ohio, through a state-term scheduled contract, in the amount of eighty-two thousand, three hundred twenty-nine dollars and zero cents. This was sent to the board under separate cover. This is also a permanent improvement expenditure. Thirteen, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education authorizes the business manager to sell buses one-five-seven-fifteen-twenty-one and a nineteen ninety-five Chevy red pickup truck. It was a mechanic's truck, which has been determined to be no longer needed for school purposes. These items will be posted on an online auction site, Bus Movers &amp; More of Euclid, Ohio. The net proceeds of the sale will be returned to the permanent improvement fund. Fourteen, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the hot water heater replacement projects at RB Chamberlain Middle School and the Twinsburg High School, with CCG Automation of Richfield, Ohio, through a state-term scheduled contract, in the amount of one hundred and four thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars and zero cents, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a permanent improvement expense. Fifteen, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the purchase of computers from Gov Connection of Merrimack, New Hampshire, in the amount of seventy-four thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty cents. This project will be paid for using permanent improvement funds. And finally, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approved the purchase of a two thousand fifteen box truck van from Valley Truck Centers of Cleveland, Ohio, through a state-term scheduled contract, in the amount of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and zero cents, pending financing, as sent to the board under separate cover. This purchase will be paid for using permanent improvement funds. Is there a motion for those items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Solera. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Torel Waldron. I would like to just highlight, because I thought this was very interesting, when we talk about being fiduciary responsible, that we're now retiring a nineteen ninety-five vehicle. That's twenty-one years of service. We don't even have students stay in the district that long. So, but what you're doing in nineteen ninety-five. So that's just a small slice of fiduciary responsibility. Not sure why we couldn't get a couple more years out of it, but they probably don't make parts anymore. But all seriousness aside, I just wanted to highlight that, because that is, you know, talk about squeezing pennies. Is there any further comments, anything? You highlighted this a lot in buildings and grounds.
I know Ms. Powers mentioned summer reading logs for the kids, and they might not seem too thrilled about, but actually, if you coordinate that maybe with the summer reading program they have at the library, they have goals you can set, they have prizes you can win, and it's just always a really good, just extra activity for the kids to do in the summer. That's maybe not sports or something else, but I know one time my daughter won some Indians tickets through that. So it's, so you're going to be reading anyways for school, and you might as well do kind of like a double duty and sign up for the summer reading program at the library.
Any further comments on the seven motions that are pending from the board? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Torel Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those items pass five-oh. We're now at miscellaneous. Would want to highlight, in twenty-three days, Tiger Stadium will once again be invited, or invaded, by the Sixteenth Annual Relay for Life. For those that don't know, there are four THS now juniors that are, for the first time, leading this event. This, again, is the Sixteenth Annual, and that will be taking place at June, on June twenty-fourth, going back to an overnight. So it starts at six p.m. June twenty-fourth, commencing June twenty-fifth at noon. This is a free, open-to-the-community event. There is a relay cafe. You can come purchase food to support relay, but come up, listen to music, see, take part in a lot of the fun, and just see what this particular relay has in store, being led for the first time by students at the high school, as opposed to adults for the previous fifteen years. Any other comments from miscellaneous?
I'd like to make one comment, kind of give an accolades to the Twinsburg band. I had an opportunity to attend the activities after the Memorial Day Parade, you know, where they were, you know, where they played. And I always continue to be amazed at their poise, professionalism. The program is just, I mean, it's always been good, but it's like really good, like better. And I heard comments, not only just for myself and my family, but of other people that were there, of how impressed they were with our band. And so I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledge that, and also the little ones who sang as well. Couldn't see them. I was too far back, but I could hear them. So it just warmed my heart, the district's involvement in that, in that program, and just a memorable day. It made it very, very special.
Congratulations to our local VFW folks for, again, pulling that whole parade. And I think Ryan Bonis from the band's name was mentioned at least two or three times. Taps gets me every time. So thank you for bringing that up. Any other comments, miscellaneous?
Yeah, I just wanted to also reiterate the wonderful job that the administration did for our graduates for this year. I got to play a couple different, wear different hats. I was also a mom as well, excuse me, as well as a board member. So having the experience and seeing it through, you know, a mom's eyes, and seeing my daughter's joy, they did an amazing job, really made each graduate feel special. And it was just very well done. So thank you, Mrs. Toringo and staff, for doing that. It was a great evening.
Anything further? Anything from our administrators?
Not too much.
Okay. We're now at L. We do have need for an executive session. Excuse me. I will make the motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at eight seventeen to discuss the employment, compensation of public employees as per Board of Education Policy 0166A. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Torel Waldron?
Yes.
And that item passes five-oh. The board is now in executive session. We do not anticipate any further business when we reconvene. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.